Good morning, everyone. Welcome to those joining us here at the Texas Tribune Studio 919 in Austin and those joining us online for today's event titled "Public Education and the Special Session." My name is Matt Ewald, and I serve as the Texas Tribune's Director of Events and Live Journalism. Governor Greg Abbott has made school choice his top political priority for 2023. So far this year, the legislature has declined to enact the core of his proposal, allowing parents to use state dollars to pay for their children's homeschooling or private school tuition. Can Abbott, who called a special session starting October 9th, overcome resistance from Democrats and rural Republicans in the House? Billions of dollars in additional school funding and pay raises for Texas teachers have been held up in the standoff. What would the legislation mean for students, teachers, and the future of public education in Texas? And is compromise possible? We'll consider these questions in today's conversation. Our moderator for this event is Becky Fogel, education reporter at KUT Radio, Austin's NPR station. Our speakers include Corey DeAngelis, Senior Fellow at the American Federation of Children, Norma Kantu, Professor of Education and Professor of Law at UT Austin College of Education, and John Emmerich, Superintendent of Crockett Independent School District. Before we begin today's program, I want to acknowledge today's major sponsors, the Texas Association of School Administrators and Texas Association of School Business Officials. Though corporate sponsors and donors underwrite this event, they play no role in determining the content, speakers, or line of questioning. We thank those Texas Tribune members who are joining us in person and online today. Our journalism, including our extensive journalism covering education throughout the state, thrives thanks to the support of our members. Texans deserve the truth, and we're dedicated to delivering it. If you're not yet a member, please consider a contribution, no matter the amount, to empower our mission. You can show your support by going to texastribune.org/donate and donating today. We also have a series of events coming up focused on the special session. I'll mention a couple here. Next week, on Wednesday, October 25th, we'll convene here again for a conversation on the border and the special session. You can find more information and RSVP on the Texas Tribune website. And on Wednesday, November 1st, we'll look at public education beyond the special session, focused on the issues that education advocates say require lawmakers' attention, including school funding, teacher recruitment and retention, and improving student performance. Stay tuned to our Texas Tribune Events page for more information on this November 1st event and others. Today's program runs one hour with approximately 45 minutes for our panel discussion and 15 minutes for your questions. We'll welcome questions from our audience here in Studio 919, and we'll ask questions on behalf of those of us joining us online. You can visit our Q&amp;A portal at texastribune.org/ask. That's texastribune.org/ask to submit your questions, and let us know where you're joining us from. So before we begin today's program, let me briefly introduce our panel. Our moderator, Becky Fogel, is the education reporter at KUT, Austin's NPR station. She started at KUT in 2016 as a statewide newscaster for Texas Standard before becoming the Texas Newsroom Newscast editor. And before joining KUT, she worked for Science Friday, and her first job in radio was with KWBU in Waco. And now our panelists, in alphabetical order. Norma Kantu is a professor of education and a professor of law at the University of Texas at Austin School of Law. For eight years, she served as the Assistant Secretary of Education for Civil Rights in the Clinton administration, where she oversaw staff approximately 850 in implementing governmental policy for civil rights in American education. And prior to her service as the nation's chief civil rights enforcer in the educational arena, Kantu worked for 14 years as Regional Counsel and Education Director of the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund. Corey DeAngelis is a Senior Fellow at the American Federation for Children. He is also the Executive Director at Educational Freedom Institute, an adjunct scholar at the Cato Institute, a Senior Fellow at the Reason Foundation, and a board member at Liberty Justice Center. He has authored or co-authored over 40 journal articles, book chapters, and reports on education policy, and is the co-editor of "School Choice Myths: Setting the Record Straight on Education Freedom." And John Emmerich, who serves as Superintendent for Crockett Independent School District in Crockett, Texas. He has a bachelor's degree in human resource management from Western Washington University and a master's in educational administration from Sam Houston State University. He has been in the education field for 31 years, starting as a classroom teacher, campus administrator, and various central office positions before becoming superintendent. And with that, I'll turn the program over to our moderator, Becky Fogel, and have our panel join us on stage.
Hey, good morning. I hold a microphone all the time, but this is a little bit different, so trying to adjust. Well, good morning. Really excited to have this conversation with y'all. And I think we're just gonna jump right in. Matt already mentioned this, but Governor Greg Abbott has made it clear that he wants the Texas Legislature to approve a school voucher bill that gives parents taxpayer money to pay for private school and other educational expenses. So I wanted to start out by asking each of you, what is your stance on the use of public funds for private education? And John, if you want to start us off.
My stance, obviously, is it's a no-go. Without any fiscal and academic accountability for those tax dollars going to private schools, I do not think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And Norma?
I'm Norma Kantu, and I teach this subject. But I was also a litigator, and just for full disclosure, I worked on the first Edgewood case as co-counsel and on the third one. And my other disclaimer is I'm a big fan of the Texas Tribune. I actually make my graduate students attend the Texas Festival. I'm opposed to speedy decisions on matters that have to be very deliberate and are very complicated.
Look, school choice is the ultimate form of accountability. Underperforming private schools shut down. Underperforming government-run schools get more money. So this is directly accountable to families, the people who are the most important decision-makers for their own kids. And it's time for Texas to fund students, not systems, just like we've seen with 10 other states that have gone universal on school choice in just two years alone. Each of these states have been controlled by Republican legislatures, the most recent being North Carolina, going all-in on school choice, allowing every single family to take their children's state-funded education dollars to the education provider they're choosing. That could be the public school. If you like your public school, you can keep your public school for all this time. But if not, you can take that funding to a private school, a charter school, or a home-based education option. It's time for Texas to get on board as well. We already have public funding going to private institutions for basically everything else, and people across the political spectrum support it in other industries and other levels of education, for higher ed. We have Pell Grants for low-income kids. You can take that funding, public taxpayer dollars, to a public university if you want, but you could also take it to a private religious or nonreligious university. With Head Start and other pre-K programs, same thing. The funding follows the decision of the family. With food stamps, you can take them to HEB if you want, and that's a great decision if you want to do that. They have great produce. But if not, you can take it to Walmart or another provider of the service. We do this with Medicaid vouchers. You can take it to religious hospitals if you want. Section 8 housing vouchers. So why is it okay for everything else, but not for these in-between years of K through 12 education? And I'll answer real quick, then we can move on.
Oh, well, actually, can I cut in for a second here, Corey? Because I think each of the programs that you just mentioned, those are all federally-funded programs aimed at assisting low-income individuals. And the bill that the Texas Senate has approved, although it prioritizes low-income students, it also allows students of any income, as well as students currently in private school. And I think some of the concerns people have raised about vouchers in other states is that the vast majority of people using them are folks who can already afford private school, who are currently in private school. So I guess if you support those programs, would you like to see the voucher program in Texas more, I guess specifically, target low-income students versus being universal?
No, that would be an apt comparison if we had food stamps funding everybody regardless of income. We don't have that today. And so with the public education system, everybody is guaranteed a publicly-funded education in the state of Texas and in every other state. That funding should follow the student. I'm not making an argument about how much that funding level should be per student. I think we could probably all agree that maybe it should go up.
Before anybody agrees, are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I'm an attorney. And let me tell you, we have a Texas Constitution section that we have to follow about not funding religious activities. Also, also, we've been to the Texas Supreme Court six times, I told you I was co-counsel on two of those times, on the matter of school funding. And the private charter schools were told by the Texas Supreme Court, you are not part of this case. You opted out of the Texas public system.
Yeah, but look, Ken Paxton issued a statement saying that education savings accounts would be constitutional under the Texas Constitution. And there's no separation of church and state issue with vouchers for the same reason there's no issue with higher education Pell Grants. The funding goes to people, and they can choose among religious and nonreligious providers. The schools are indirect beneficiaries of the funding. It's not a direct subsidy. It's not the state establishing a religion. So there's no First Amendment issue with school choice.
I'm listening to the non-attorney. When General Paxton--
What's wrong with my argument? All you're doing is attacking the messenger.
When General Paxton gets on the Texas Supreme Court, he can say that. All he can do right now is argue about it.
And thank you guys so much. That was a good, robust discussion on that issue. I'm sure we'll circle back to it. And I actually do want to turn now to John and talk a little bit about public education funding. So Governor Abbott has said it's possible to fully fund public schools while also funding vouchers. I think just my basic question is, right now, is your public school fully funded?
Absolutely not. The last increase that schools got was in 2019, and since that time--
They just passed $10 billion in the legislature.
Let's let each person respond.
Since that time, we've had about a 19% increase in inflation without an increase to the schools. The proposed bill right now gives us an extra $75. Now, it does give some money to teachers, which I'm 100% for, but directly to operate the schools and educate students, it's an increase of $75. It does have some money for safety in there. Still not adequate to follow the new law as far as having an officer on every campus, but absolutely not. Schools are not funded. So just to keep up with inflation, the basic lawman would need to be about $7,100 now. They're proposing, I think it is $62.35, something like that.
Are you at Crockett ISD?
Yes, sir.
So Public School Review has your funding level at $16,124 per student per year. What number do you think would be adequate for your district? So it's currently at 16,124. I can show you the phone. That's including total revenues, state, federal, and local. But as far as like an adequate--
The point is, the money coming to public schools right now is highly scrutinized, both academically and financially, as I stated before. And to me, it's a non-starting issue to even talk about my tax dollars going to private schools without having those same accountability standards that we do, especially the fiscal part.
So could we agree on something? If we were to expand choice, there are a lot of red tape associated with the funding in the public schools, and I'm hearing you on that. And I heard something in Fort Worth on the same issue yesterday. What if we were to deregulate the public schools, allow you to be more flexible and autonomous, and then also have a level playing field?
And this is something that, you know, you and I have talked about, and I heard you talk about this in Fort Worth. Can you be a little more specific about what that looks like in your opinion? Because, for example, like the STAR standardized test here in Texas, the federal government doesn't require STAR per se, but it does require most grade levels to take a standardized test in order to qualify for federal funding. Obviously, that's an issue public schools are dealing with and not private ones. So what exactly would deregulation look like with a public school?
Yeah, so I've heard some complaints about high-stakes testing with the STAR test, and a lot of people don't like the STAR test on both sides of the political spectrum. So, you know, instead of strapping the private schools with the same things that the public schools are complaining about, why don't we all agree that, well, maybe we should rethink the whole STAR test thing and maybe not have as much high-stakes testing in the public school system so that you don't have a less-level playing field if there is a school choice expansion? I think they did this in Florida, which I talked about last night, too. In their universal school choice bill they passed this year, they also deregulated the public schools in terms of testing. So I think--
Is that part of the current proposal?
No, but it could be. I mean, someone could offer that as an amendment.
Okay, but let me just give you one minute of why a simple answer is gonna get us into a lot of trouble. This is complicated. I've spent like 14 years of my life working on this. First of all, one of the exhibits that was turned in on school finance was all the different parts of Texas government that bears on schools, that schools have to comply with. There are state and local policies that they've got to comply with. There's a Texas health code, Texas tax code, Texas labor code, Texas penal code, records, communication with parents, contracts, real estate, partnerships with businesses, partnerships with higher education. We're connected to all of those existing Texas requirements, and they cost money to do. If we want to have safe schools, and I know we all do, we can't just deregulate everything. For goodness sakes, think about it before you suggest it. Secondly, student assessment starts with the why. Why are we teaching? What's our purpose in education? And then we figure out how to assess it, and we come up with metrics that make sense. Student assessment is expensive. Texas spends a lot of money because we keep changing the tests every few years. Once the school districts are able to put together a structure where they can meet that expectation, and school districts are not afraid of rigor and high standards, they can live up to it. And the students and parents aren't afraid of it. But inaccurate tests make us keep going back and changing and changing and changing, and you've got to factor it in. And then the last part is, think of all the plus add-ons that public schools do. They offer things that make school attendance sticky, like extracurricular programs, like theater, like band, like things that offer honors and recognitions. And think about the changes that schools have to be nimble to react to, like technology and access to Wi-Fi. All of this, I think I went over 10 seconds over my minutes. All of this makes me think that coming up with a 30-day deadline on a special session to overturn and disrupt and create chaos is not a good process and will produce an even worse result.
And Corey, my next question actually is for you, if I can keep it moving a little bit. Recent polling from the University of Texas and Texas Politics Project found that nearly half of voters in the state support school vouchers.
Over half, 52%.
Depending on how you frame the question, it's 52%. If you frame it a different way, it's 45. But yeah, over 45 and up, as well as a margin of error. But it also found, in that same, their polling as well, that school vouchers were not a top priority for Republican or Democratic voters. For Democrats, it was a low priority. For Republicans, it was middle of the pack. School safety was still far and away the top priority, top educational priority for voters. But I guess why do you think, if this is something that voters may not be clamoring for, and you may have a difference of opinion there, but if the polling shows it's not necessarily something voters are clamoring for, why do you think this should be a priority for the state of Texas?
One, it's something they support. Looking at UT Austin polling, look at Dallas Morning News polling. Texas Tribune polling has also found a plurality of Texans support school vouchers. Polling from University of Houston has found a majority of Texans support school vouchers, too. So they want it. I mean, you're just looking at one poll. But also, these things aren't mutually exclusive. If it's not the number-one priority, maybe it's lower on the list, you can do other things, too. So we could, you can increase funding for public schools also and increase education freedom for families. These aren't mutually exclusive things. So I think that's why, if you look at the ballot last year, they had, on the Texas Republican primary ballot, 88% of Republicans supported school choice of ballot proposition number nine last year, which was up nine points since they last had it on the ballot in 2018, from 79% to 88% support. And this, so if you look at the preponderance of the evidence in the polling on this issue, the voters in Texas want it. Other red states are doing it, engaging in friendly competition to empower parents. Again, 10 states have done so in two years alone. 31 other states have some form of private school choice already. The nine most rural states in the country, according to Census Bureau data, all have some form of private school choice programs already. So this, you know, this idea about Texas being rural, and that's an excuse as to why it can't have school choice, it's totally bogus. West Virginia is much more rural than Texas, and they have a universal school choice program, the first state to do so. Maine and Vermont have school voucher programs that started in the 1800s because it was such a rural, they were such rural states, they didn't have public schools in some places. So they figured out that they can give vouchers to families to attend public schools in other areas or even private schools. They understood that if you don't have a lot of choice, that's not an argument to restrict it even further. If anything, that's an argument to expand education freedom. And again, the polls, the same ones I cited a second ago, all find that the rural voters are more supportive of school vouchers than non-rural voters, on average.
Yeah. And I want, oh, did you want to respond to that?
Well, just to add, in the first unanimous decision by the Texas Supreme Court, the court couldn't legislate, but they suggested to the legislators, let's start merging school districts, and let's start closing school districts. Okay, so they didn't know what they were talking about. And I think someone here doesn't know what they're talking about either, because the rurals matter, the urbans matter, all kids matter. Education for all is the goal of our Texas Constitution. You know who came up with the guaranteed level of funding for Texas? Does someone know the name of the governor who did that in the 1800s? He was a Confederate general, and he became a university president and then governor. And he put together that guaranteed program to all kids? Think about it. If we're not willing to do what a Confederate general did for the state of Texas? Think about it.
But are Texas public schools actually educating all kids proficiently and efficiently as stated in the Texas Constitution? When in Dallas, they have 23% of kids--
And the fast response to that is, we can have more public school choice. In the 1990s, I worked for the White House, and that was when the Congress decided choice was something that we could invest federal money into as an add-on, as a plus, a guarantee that no public school would lose funding, but we would invest additional dollars. And I don't hear that guarantee about public schools losing funding here in Texas.
And I would like to bring John into this conversation, just because you are the superintendent of a rural school district. How do you anticipate a voucher program, if it's approved in Texas? How may that impact your school district? Maybe not in year one, but down the line.
Well, what we have seen in other states is that you have these microschools that pop up, basically just online private schools. People are going to be willing to take that money, if they're allowed to, and say they're offering some product. In a lot of the states, though, we also see that most of those private schools shut down within four years. They really were never in the business of educating kids. They were in the business of trying to make a buck. So that's something that we fear is going to happen here in Texas if this were to come. I don't have a big private school in my area, like most rural areas, but that is the fear. And, you know, we tried the online education experience during COVID, and we saw how that was not the best thing for kids. And that certainly is not something that I would like to see happen. So that's my big worry with that.
But I don't think you should be worried at all if your schools are doing a good job for kids. I mean, you're getting over $16,000 per student to educate them, and if your schools are performing well, I don't think there should be any fear from competition. But the reality is, if you look at Public School Review, only 23% of kids are proficient in math in your district, and only 28% are proficient in reading. So shouldn't those families have an opportunity to go somewhere else? But you also did point out there's only--
Those families do have a choice to go somewhere else. We have school choice in Texas.
So there's not a lot of private schools in your area, so you should be the last person arguing about this will defund your schools, because if families can't leave and public schools are funded based on attendance or enrollment counts, then you're not gonna lose any money at all. So I think, if anything, in your district, you should be the least concerned about competition leading to an exodus of students.
Well, and let's circle back to those statistics, because I think that's something that a lot of voucher supporters bring up. If you look at STAR scores statewide, I believe in grades three through eight, 52% were at or above grade level in reading. It was about 40% for math. Obviously, folks would like those to be higher. One of the challenges rural school districts have is recruiting teachers. We also know we have a teacher shortage in the state. We also know we have, like, a growing part of the workforce that's alternatively certified and isn't going through the same preparation as teachers previously. So let's maybe talk about the story from your perspective behind those statistics. What do you think are the things that are contributing or could help improve student achievement in your district?
Well, the big thing behind it is what the governor had a teacher task force put together to try to study that very issue. Number-one thing they came up with was teacher pay. And so I would say that that's the number-one driving thing behind it. The money that I have in a poor rural area that I'm in, I cannot compete with schools that are about, you know, an hour and a half away from me and offer a salary that is way more. Plus, just the idea of what attracts someone to a rural area like that. So teacher pay is a big part of that. That should be the number-one discussion that we're having right now, not this idea of school choice. Again, we have school choice in Texas. Kids are free to go to other school districts as they wish. I have some students from neighboring districts. Some of the students that live in my district go to neighboring districts. That's just the way it works. And I think that is fine to give parents that choice. So, you know, that's how I would respond to that. The other part of this, too, is, you know, if you want to talk again about accountability and use that to determine whether a public school is meeting a certain mark or not, why would that not be fair for the private school to have to meet that same mark and determine whether or not they are meeting that arbitrary mark of some standardized test? So again, without having the playing field even there, and I know Corey said, well, let's just do away with that. You know, we could probably agree on that. Like Norma said, getting rid of all those other regulations. A, we couldn't do it if we wanted to. There's too many of those that are federal or state requirements, so it's not something as easy as that. But, you know, we certainly, I know superintendents across the state would be happy to have that discussion. We're already having that discussion about the state testing and how that should look, and is it the best measure right now? But whatever measure that is for public schools needs to be the same measure for private schools if my tax money is gonna go to those schools.
And from experience in Austin, when we first adopted the charter schools, and we cut all of the tape, we had, we found some parents going to turn their kids in and leave them at the front door, but they couldn't because people took the money up front and left town. We had people who didn't have background checks, and they embezzled the funds. And they had problems with molesting kids. So you can't cut all the red tape.
You can point to the same examples in the traditional public school system, too. So don't use an outlier to--
But this was not considered by the governor's office as an outlier. They immediately reacted and talked to the legislature about putting the protections for all kids, including kids going to private or charter schools. All kids deserve a protection of safety, and all parents deserve a protection of not having their money be wasted or fraudulently used. But the last thing I want to leave you with is, please think about the fact that we've made gains in Texas. When the lawsuit was filed, this state was very divided with haves and have-nots, and we have spent more than a decade working together. And this issue being rushed at us in this special session is divisive. We want to work together, and we want choices. Like I said, I was part of an administration that supported more choice and finding the money for it. But those choices have to be choices that are child-centered. They have to benefit the kids. And that evidence has to be there before the decision is made, that no kids will get hurt.
The evidence today is that we have a system that divides people between haves and have-nots. We have schools that discriminate on the basis of zip codes. People buy their way into districts to get into better so-called public schools. I grew up in San Antonio, Texas. I had friends that lied about their address to get into better so-called public schools. So this, we already have this world of haves and have-nots. The Senate just passed Senate Bill 1 just pretty recently. All Democrats voted against it, 12 of them. Eight of the 12, at least, either went to private school or sent their kids to private school. And I don't blame them for that. I think every family should seek the best educational opportunity for their kid, but they shouldn't pull the ladder up behind them and fight against educational freedom for less advantaged families. School choice is an equalizer. Funding the student directly, giving them that opportunity, will allow more families to have access to private education options than we have today. And the current public school system is not equitable with how it's set up today, where you have, you live here, you better go here. Just imagine if we told low-income families, you live here, you have to use your snap dollars at this grocery store that happens to be run by the government. That makes no sense. If we're gonna fund education, and I support that we do in Texas, it should go to people, not buildings. It should fund the student, not the system. That makes no sense. If we're going to fund education, and I support that we do in Texas, it should go to people, not buildings. It should fund the student, not the system.
And I think I'd like to move on to another issue related to vouchers, and that has to do with protections for students with disabilities. This is one of the primary, I think, criticisms of school vouchers, that basically, private schools are not required to take students with disabilities or provide services or supports to students with disabilities. And I guess I was curious, Norma, obviously, with your background, working on civil rights for students, what is your perspective on government money going to entities that are not required to basically protect the rights of students with disabilities?
If the schools accept federal funding, they have to follow the American with Disabilities Act. So yes, those students do have protections. If they're not getting protected, that's a problem that the federal government is going to work out. And let me tell you something about private religious schools. If they can demonstrate that it's related to their faith, it's a faith-based decision, then they can claim an exception. But my personal experience with half of our complaint load coming on the area of disability, my favorite people to talk to were the people from the religious communities, because they wanted to help kids with disabilities. They didn't want to turn them away. They didn't, the public schools pay some of the private schools to take their kids. And so there is money following those kids, and those private schools welcome the money or their faith requires them to take care of those who are needy. People with disabilities have to be at the front of this discussion. And if we're rushing it, that's hard on that group. I joined the community of people with disabilities when I found out I had an autoimmune condition. I have glaucoma. I've got problems, okay? And now I'm very aware and I can empathize and advocate for that group.
Yes, and Norma, you pointed out that we already do have some form of school choice for students with special needs under IDEA, that if you're not getting your rights met as a special needs student in the public school, which they have all these requirements in the public school, but just because you can check a box and say, I did this, that, or the other, doesn't mean you're actually meeting the needs of that student with special needs. And so under IDEA, you can go to the district and say, you're not meeting my needs, pay for me to go to a private school that is better suited to my needs. But sometimes the district will say, no, we checked this box, and we actually are meeting your needs, so you have to take it to a judge. What families are the most likely to be able to go take this to a judge and mess with jumping through all these hoops? It's probably the more advantaged families. I think we shouldn't have to have that burden of proof on the parents. The parents should just be able to say, I have this child, that school's not meeting my needs, I'm the best person to make that decision, and let me take my children's education dollars, because these dollars don't belong to the schools, public or private. It's meant for educating the child. It should follow them to the institution that works best for them. They should be able to take it to a private school without having to go to a judge. And 21 states at least have some form of school choice on the private side that were created with students with special needs in mind, because the public schools are failing them so miserably in some places. Not all the time, but in some cases, either these kids are getting bullied or the services aren't being provided in an adequate way, and they might want to go to a private school, too. And so I think this is why we should expand private school choice beyond just what's in IDEA today.
And I guess my question there would be, you know, there are no protections in SB1 for students with disabilities. If they try to take their voucher to a private school and that voucher, I mean, and that private school turns them away. State Representative Erin Zwiener shared an anecdote recently about how when she was a child in elementary school, she was considered difficult, she had undiagnosed ADHD, her parents applied to a private school, the private school rejected her, and that that was like a hard thing for her to deal with as a child. Do you think that there should be protections provided to students with disabilities in this type of legislation? Should private schools be required to serve students with disabilities who apply to attend them?
I don't think top-down regulations are the same thing as accountability, and I don't think a lot of the things that have been passed in the past. So like, for example, we have a CRT ban, but the schools are still doing it. You look at videos from accuracy and media.
Well, I just want to stop.
I mean, I'll share the, you can laugh all you want, or call it something else, call it social emotional learning, whatever you want. But, I mean, I don't care what the, I don't care what the curriculum. I mean, you guys did this to Randon, too, last time. You guys are very friendly at the Texas Tribune, where you bring something up and the audience starts laughing.
Yeah, we'll try to keep it civil, so everybody can share their perspective.
I think the better form of accountability is the bottom-up. People voting with their feet to schools that align with their values and best meet their needs. So when I bring up the curriculum that you guys might favor, or you might say, oh, it's not happening, fine. I don't care what the curriculum is in the school. I think the big part for me is that families should be able to choose the schools that align with their values best. In the current system, because it's a one-size-fits-all institution, you have one group of families or a special interest, which is more likely the case, determining how to raise other people's children. The only way out of this mess, I think, which is better than the top-down approach of banning a concept or promoting another concept, is from the bottom-up. And look, if it's not happening in the schools, why are you so concerned about the bans in the first place? But I really don't think that's really an enforceable way to do it. And I think the better way to do it, to that we enhance freedom for everybody to raise their own kids in ways that are aligned with their own values, is choice from the bottom-up. So I don't have a stance on what this top-down regulation should look like.
But there's a finite amount of dollars that the state is willing to pay. And when Governor Bush was running Texas, the state paid 60% right off the top of the cost of public education. And the locals would supplement to get it up to another 25%, and the federal government would kick in about 15, 13 to 15. Now, because of legislation in Texas, they go to the locals first and ask, how high property tax can you ask for, and how much can you raise? And we at the state level will supplement you. And that is a real political change. And that is what we are worried about, after having spent six trips to the Texas Supreme Court, to try to get as close to equalizing and having education mean education for y'all, everybody all. Now we're going to have to roll it back, and I don't want litigation. I'm one of those lawyers that doesn't want to go to court. I don't want to, and we don't need to, if we are thoughtful, we are considerate, and we've done it before with one of our recent legislative acts that funded from the state to the locals.
And with the property value study, they end up taking some of that back. My district lost about $1 million last year, because the state said property values should be here, and the local appraiser didn't have them as high as they said they could. So the only entity that's hurt in that is the school districts. Again, I lost almost $1 million in funding.
And in two of those trips to the Texas Supreme Court was because the state messed with the property tax decisions at the local level, that we're not respecting local authorities.
And I did want to talk a little bit to John about this. I think what you brought up, Cory, about, you know, public schools being one-size-fits-all, that is something that comes up a lot among voucher supporters. So I guess I do want to ask you, John, you know, do you feel like your school district is equipped to meet the needs of a variety of students? And if you aren't right now, what are some of the things that might help you be able to do that?
Yeah, that is certainly very far from the truth. Public schools offer a far greater variety of programs than most public or private schools offer. So obviously, that's dependent on how big the school is and how much money the school has. There's certainly some things I can't do in a small rural community where a bigger school district with more money and more students is able to do. But I don't believe there's any schools that do that. And I think one of the big reasons for that is, in Texas, we're not government schools. We're locally controlled schools. I have a school board of... I have a bunch of government regulations, but I have seven local people that are elected from our community that make the decisions. And if they don't like my decisions, they have the power to get rid of me. And that's the way it is with school districts all across the state of Texas. And so this idea that we're government schools, I'd also, Cory mentioned the curriculum. Do you know where the curriculum in Texas comes from?
State.
From, yes. So this idea that we're teaching this woke curriculum that you mentioned...
Not all schools, maybe your district's not. Maybe it's not a problem there. Maybe it's not a problem.
You know, that's not the case.
But you're also saying you have a wide variety of options in your district.
And well, and I, oh, I actually do have a follow-up question. I apologize to interrupt. I'm just looking at the time, and we're getting, will be audience questions in about five, 10 minutes or so. Okay, actually, my next question is for you, Cory, so I'm cutting you off, but I'm asking you a question.
I'll answer his and then go to you.
Yeah, I see, I see. Okay, so, and I might be getting the date of this wrong, but you wrote an opinion piece in 2016 arguing that legalizing discrimination would improve schools. If I understood the article accurately, it talks about how the market, for example, might eliminate private schools that have racist hiring practices. But it also talked about how it might not be fair to low-performing students for them to be in a school with high-performing students. It might be difficult for the teacher, it might make the students feel bad. I guess in that argument, what is the benefit to students themselves?
Yeah, I mean, this is an article from seven years ago, that someone, you know, whatever, but look...
And do you still stand by that?
I mean, yes. The argument is that if a school is engaging in unhealthy discrimination, then we should, I want to know who those people are, so that we can defund them and launch a PR campaign against them. So, and then in the current system, we already have discrimination in admissions in magnet schools, for example. We have discrimination by zip code in the current system, too. I think that's an unhealthy form of discrimination, just saying that you live here and you have to go here. So I think that's an unjust form of discrimination. And I think when we know about these things happening that are in the minds of other people, we have a better ability to defund them. And then, so I think that's the market at work, right? Bottom-up accountability. If you knew a school was engaging in horrible discrimination, wouldn't you want to defund it, too? I would. So that's the point of that argument that I was making. But then as far as the school district having a variety of options, that was mentioned earlier, I think that could be true. I think it could be true. I'm not going to say that it's not. And if it is, then you shouldn't be arguing that, oh, my goodness, if there's choice, this is going to defund our schools. I think if anything, you should be confident in your product. If you have a lot of options, giving a person another option that isn't as innovative as your options, I think that's great. And people can still choose the options within the public school system. And as far as the funding levels in Texas, we spend about $15,700 per student per year, according to TEA data. It's increased by about 166% since 1970, after adjusting for inflation. But the money isn't being spent wisely. Over the same period, only about 10%, only about, raises have only gone up by about 10% for teachers, which is also part of this special session call. You could include teacher raises as well.
Sure. And those are unfortunately one-time raises that aren't necessarily guaranteed in future bienniums. I think also, one thing in terms of per-student funding, even the base that we have, like you mentioned, I think you said around $15,000 is what is being expended per student, and the basic allotment is the minimum the state must pay, $6,160. That is actually a number that has never been studied in Texas. We don't actually know in the state what it costs to educate any of our students. It's a made-up number that's used as the baseline, and it hasn't been adjusted since 2019.
But we can compare that to the private school tuition and fees, which is on average $10,600 in Texas. Some are higher, obviously, the country day schools.
Yeah, Austin, for example, I think the median is $13,000.
Right? So, and then in Austin, they spend over $20,000 per student per year, looking at public school reviews, and comparing that to the $13,000 average private school tuition. I don't know if we're getting the bang for our buck in the traditional system. I know tuition doesn't cover the full cost of educating a kid in a private school. There are other sources of revenues, too. But at the end of the day, I'm not here to make an argument about what the magic number is. None of us know what that is. But all I'm arguing is that if we do increase the funding, we should also have choice for families. They should be able to direct where that funding ultimately goes.
And let me tell you, we're not talking about the budget that is now. We're talking about the future budgets. There was a hearing I attended at the state legislature some years ago, and people were saying, when the football team is on the field and they're throwing the football, they're not throwing it to where their teammate is. They're throwing it to where their teammate is going to be, because their teammate is running. There's a movement happening here. The same thing is true if we have as a state the goal of educating all Texans, we should be closing the gaps between urbans and rurals, the gaps between boys and girls, all these gaps that are discrepancies. I'm not saying discrimination, because we've come a long way in Texas fighting discrimination. But I'm talking about unacceptable gaps. We need to know why they're there and what our plans are for having all mean all. And that plan isn't in front of the legislature. All we have is an idea, a concept. Concepts are great, but a concept can hurt you if you're not strategic.
I do want to ask a final question to each of you, and if folks do want to ask a question in the room, I think you can line up at these microphones over here. My final question is, I think at the core of education, right, is educating, supporting kids so they can have healthy, happy futures. A lot of this conversation around vouchers is about politics, funding, like, you know, many things that don't have anything to do with kids. So I guess my baseline question, I think it's a hard question to answer. Do we know if vouchers are good for kids, improve student outcomes for both kids in private school as well as public school? Because I think we have to think about the kids who remain in the publics as well. And whoever wants to start.
I can go first, I guess we'll go down. But yes, the competitive effects are positive. I even had Josh Cowan from Michigan State University, who's lauded by the defenders of the status quo as an expert on the topic, admit in a debate with Sinclair Broadcast Group recently that the evidence on the competitive effects of school choice is positive. We have a made analysis on this from UT Austin, actually. Jabbar and her team found that if you pull the effect sizes together from school choice, including private school choice programs, the effects on the public schools are improved. And if you list out the studies, there's 29 of them actually, 26 of the 29 find statistically significant positive effects of private school choice competition on the outcomes in the public schools. So school choice is a rising tide that lifts all boats. I'm glad you brought this up, because a lot of the main arguments against school choice is that this is going to destroy or decimate or defund the public school system, when, if you're going to make that fear-mongering claim, the burden of proof should be on you to provide the evidence. The fact is, the evidence is exactly the opposite, that if anything, it improves the outcomes in the public schools. And another side benefit is that, look, public schools in Texas spend over $15,000 per kid, we all agree on that, total on average. And the voucher amount would be about $8,000 per kid. So mathematically, the public schools would end up with thousands of dollars for students who are no longer educating. So on a per-student basis, it will actually be higher.
Yeah.
If you get to keep any of the money for a student who's no longer there.
I'm not sure how that's going to look at, exactly.
The number goes up.
And I'm not sure that you're using current data. That study was pre-COVID. And we've now noticed, you know, we're getting more and more scientists talking about the impact of the isolation of students during the two years. People looking backwards now are saying, gee, I wish I could revisit that decision, but the decision was made. And we have to fix the consequences of that decision. And so new research would point the directions. And talking with the administrators themselves, who do the heavy lifting and making that board of trustees set the policies, this is probably the most important thing that the state of Texas does. And yet, it is not what they fund. So when we look to the Bible and say, you know, look to where your gold is and your treasure is, that's where your heart is? Texas' heart is just not in education the way it should be. That's the emotional pitch. But let me give you the factual pitch. The factual pitch is that we don't have our act together at the state in terms of what our future's going to be for bringing back teachers that have left, for preparing new teachers for this new, for this new form of instruction, because now we're being affected by AI. Some of the things that were required curriculum are out of date now. And we need to have these conversations without making people... Those of you who saw Six, you know that "shh" is one of the phrases in the musical. The musical that I want to draw you back to, I'll close, is my optimism. There's one where we say, put everyone in the room where it happens. So you know that one. But the other are, what you do matters as much as what you say. You can say you're for kids and then do things that make them feel not valued, not protected, and not prepared for the future. So into the woods, children are listening.
And John, any closing thoughts before we go to questions?
Yeah, and I would echo those thoughts by, you know, what you do and what you say right now. Having this discussion, again, sounds like, you know, we could come to some points that we might agree on. But right now, doing what's best for kids is being held hostage by this discussion on vouchers. You know, I don't think that there's anyone realistically that looks at, is there adequate funding for public schools? And thinks that that is okay right now. But the way it is right now, it's been said that will not happen unless vouchers happen. And again, those two things should be separate discussions and take the time, as Norma said, to fully understand the implications of what that is. to fully understand the implications of what that is. You know, in a lot of states where this has happened, the amount of tuition in those private schools has gone up by the amount of the voucher. And I fully expect that that will probably happen here in Texas. You know, just--
A study just came out finding that--
People are going to chase those dollars.
And I'm so, we could totally go back and forth.
Finding the opposite. Tuition hasn't gone up.
Yeah, and like you said, there's a lot of studies out there that do come to some different conclusions, for sure, and find some benefits, also mixed results, some negative. So it really runs the gamut. And probably speaks to the fact that if Texas does do this, it would be worth studying the outcomes for these students, just so we could have a baseline to assess whether this type of program is effective. All right.
Great. So as we enter our Q and A period, just first want to thank our panelists, our moderator. For those who are joining us online, and there are many, you can ask your question at texastribune.org/ask. And of course, so that out of respect for other questions, if you can keep it to a question, then we can get response and be able to get more. So with that, we'll enter our Q and A. Thank you.
Well, before I ask my question, I do have to give some information. So you are stating that 87% of the Republican voters that came to the primaries voted in favor of school choice. However, if you look at the wording of the question on the ballot, it was a little bit deceptive, where school districts actually get dinged for deceptive language. There was a law created that we're not allowed to use deceptive language. That was very deceptive language. And the fact of the matter is, is that of the 17.2 million registered voters, 17.7% showed up, and only 11.4% of them were Republicans. It wasn't even on the Democratic ballot. So if you want to do the math out, it's probably less than 10% of registered Republicans that maybe understood and voted.
I think they didn't understand what school choice means.
And we do need a question, though.
Yes, okay. But, and then on top of it, because I'm from a rural school district, I drove over four hours to get here today, okay? So when we were presented in February of 2023 from the Charles Butt Foundation, the study that was done regarding how people perceive rural school districts, showed that our approval amongst our community members is at an all-time high. 89% of the rural population approves of what their school districts are doing and how they're doing it. So my question is, you sit back and you say, you have all of these people that want school choice, but we have the highest approval rating for rural school districts, which by and large are extremely conservative school districts. Because if you know anything about the farmer, the farmer is one of the most conservative entities in this state. How can you say that we're for this but also for this? When I know in my community, my community said to me, you need to go down there today and fight for our public schools, because our kids matter.
I mean, this sounds fantastic, that your community is wholly supportive of your public school, but this gets back to what I said earlier. You're not going to lose any students from that fantastic public school then. If it's true that everybody has the highest approval ratings in your district, you should be the last person complaining about this defunding your school. And I don't know what district this is. I don't know what the ratings are. You know, you know that better than me. But if that's true, this, I truly believe that people will still pick the school, and there won't be a mass exodus from your school. In your area, this would be the least likely to be affected in a negative way from the program. But if not, if there's a couple students, maybe, they should be able to have a choice. You know, maybe it's every, nine out of 10 families are happier, or nine and a half out of 10. I don't know what the percentage is. But if there's a few families, maybe the kid's getting bullied in a certain situation, they should have a choice, too. And as far as the Republican primary ballot language being so-called deceptive, I think Republican voters know what their party platform is, school choice. And even if not, if you don't buy the language on that, we have the polling from UT Austin.
You're running a clock. There's 40 people in line.
From all these other sources as well.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for the response. Next question.
I'm going to keep it super short. It's just a question, which is, can we actually afford this? We've seen in other states that it balloons way out of control. And so my question is, can we actually, as a state, afford this when we have not funded education up to this point?
Yeah. And John, do you want to take that question?
I believe we cannot. I've seen the same studies of how these programs start, you know, supposedly small and how they get out of control and bloom, like most government programs. So, but the kicker again is this would be a government program without any government regulation. So I don't believe that it would. I think it would get out of control, and we cannot afford it.
If you have a quick sentence.
Yeah, so, but we could afford increasing public school funding when they already spend over double what the voucher would be, but we can't afford giving families a choice that's half the amount of funding that they would have gotten in their assigned public school. I mean, it saves taxpayer money. You're spending less than you would have before. In Arizona, you'll see the headline, $900 million. But those same kids would have cost $1.8 billion in the public schools. So I'd say the opposite is true. If anything, it saves money.
That's, well, and in Arizona, we know they might be facing a budget deficit as a state because of that program.
In 2002--
Is he moderator or are you the panel?
In 2002, the US Supreme Court decided a school choice case, Carson v. Macon, that said, you can't use a law or a state constitutional provision to deny parents educational options that are religious. So Corey is right, even though he's not a lawyer. And I did that case in the Supreme Court, so I know that I'm right here. The question is, after that case, a lot of states went full universal. And my question is, if you know, how in those states did rural parents embrace these now universal programs?
Yeah. So in Florida, for example, I wrote about this in the Wall Street Journal, they've doubled the amount of private schools in their rural counties since they've expanded school choice over decades in Florida. So that's one example where the supply of private education providers will meet the demand. If you give the families the funding directly, especially in the form of ESAs, where you can start a micro school, you don't have to build a new brick-and-mortar private school, you can have these homeschooling co-op options as well, the market's more likely to respond with ESAs as opposed to vouchers. And the public schools have improved in Florida, too. They were at the bottom of the pack in the nation's report card, the NAEP assessment a couple decades ago. Fast forward to today, the latest assessment has them in the top five, depending on the outcome you're looking at, after adjusting for student demographic characteristics. And there's been 11 studies out of Florida, 10 of them out of the 11 are positive. School choice leading to better outcomes in the public schools.
Next question.
Hi, thank you. My question is for the gentleman from Crockett, the superintendent. Thanks for making the trips, or I appreciate it. If $16,000 per student is the average for your district, so that's, if there are 20 students per classroom, that's 320K per classroom. I'm assuming your teachers make like 60 or something like that. So they get 20% of that funding. Where does the rest of it go? That's question number one. I mean, I can't imagine that the MNO costs are 80%. And then question number two is, if we took 8K of that and gave it to the student and left you 8K for all your fixed costs, it seems like that would be a good way to introduce competition. So I guess my question to you is, where does the rest of the money go? Thank you.
Well, obviously, we're operating a facility. There's fuel costs, bus costs, food service costs, cost, debt costs for property and for buildings, things like that. So it's, that's just the nature of running an operation to do that. And without having school buildings and transportation and things like that, you can't get away from all of those costs.
And if you don't pay for transportation, the kids can't exercise the choice.
But you bring up the amount to teachers. Most school districts across the state, anywhere from 80% to 85% of their budget is on personnel. So that is my number one cost right now, and I'm closer to 85.
Teachers' costs have gone through the roof. Teachers' state dismount, administrators are dismount. It's a raising slope.
Yeah, especially in private and charter schools. Yes, I would agree with that. Not in public schools.
So, yes, we are going to move on, but also, it's why we stay after the program and welcome, you know, additional conversation afterwards. I'm going to ask a question from online. We'll make sure we have time for our folks in line here. While voucher proponents stress that school choice will improve academic outcomes for students, what data is available to show how private schools perform in literacy, numeracy, and college and career readiness for all student groups?
Yeah, so there's 17 random assignment evaluations of the effects of voucher programs on student outcomes in the form of standardized test scores. A majority of those studies find statistically significant positive effects of private school choice using the program on academic outcomes. There's about six or so, looking at college readiness and attainment. The majority of those are positive as well. But when you start to look at non-academic outcomes, because parents are choosing schools for a lot of different reasons, part of it's safety, part of it's a school that aligns with your values. If you look at satisfaction studies, I believe there's about 31, 28 or so are positive on the satisfaction studies. I think that's the best metric of success, because school quality is multi-dimensional. Testing is part of it. I think there's a lot of problem with the testing. I think a lot of us can agree on that in the room today. So if safety goes into that decision, I mean, there's random assignment studies on safety, too. In DC, for example, they found that winning a lottery to attend a private school in DC through their voucher program, which is funded about 10,000 per student, whereas their public schools spend about triple that in the District of Columbia. They, if you win the lottery, no effect on test scores, at a third of the cost, but high increases in satisfaction and safety. And I think those outcomes are important, too.
Just remember, the majority of the students is what he said. And that means that some students and some families were hurt.
And also--
Which you can say about the current system, too.
The question referred to college and career readiness. Most private schools focus on college readiness. Public schools are held accountable for that college and career readiness. And in fact, the new standards that are being proposed show that the majority of schools across the state would get a worse grade now, because those standards on students that had graduated two years ago now have been raised. So what those students that graduated two years ago were supposed to have done have now been raised, and the public schools would be judged on that. Public schools do a wonderful job in educating all kids, getting kids-- In my rural district, over 90% of my students are poor. We offer a two-year college degree for them if they want to take advantage of it, and we pay for it.
But math proficiency is at 23%.
But we also, we also focus on those other things to get kids career-ready if college is not their pathway, and they'd like to do that. And public schools do a wonderful job of that.
So I'm glad you brought up safety, because one of the reasons that school districts' administrative costs have gone up is to provide for state-mandated programs, including safety and security. But my question here is, it seems to be that we're thinking that they're just printing money in the basement of the Capitol. So the average home value in Texas is less than $400,000, and the state MNO tax rate is less than a dollar. But to make the math easy, we'll just say the average home in Texas is generating $4,000 in state property tax, okay? And so my question then, if we're talking about $8,000 vouchers, this is the crux of what school districts are worried about. Where is that money coming from? It has to come from somewhere. And so if we're talking about an $8,000 voucher, when our properties are worth $4,000 and generating revenue here, where's the money coming from? And if we're also talking about the money follows the child, what about renters? Every way you slice or dice this, vouchers are a bad idea for Texas.
I mean, you can ask the same question about where's the money coming for the $16,000 we spend in the public schools per student. So, I mean, if this is a money issue and saying, oh, well, where's it coming from? The proposal in the legislature is $500 million. Public education in Texas spends, I want to say about $86 billion. This is a small sliver of the total funding. And if you just mathematically look at 8,000 versus 15,000 or 16,000, this isn't an additional cost relative to what would have been spent for those same students in the traditional system.
But you're raising the point, get data. And when COVID happened and money got sent to the state, the state held on to it and didn't release it to the local superintendents and held on to it for a while. That was wrong.
Last question.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you all for the conversation. Appreciate it. Lynn Boswell, Met trustee, and Austin ISD. I have a question for John. Thank you for being here. The Texas Public Schools Review data that reflects, you said, about $20,000 for Austin ISD, reflects all revenue we collect. It reflects our full budget. We send about $900 million, close to $1 billion, back to the state for recapture. So in that dollar figure, that is not available to use in our schools. And a lot of it, even though it was intended to go to equalize funding, as Professor Cantu mentioned, it's not happening that way. A lot of the money is going to general revenue. So I really, John, I would love to understand kind of where is the state data a more accurate reflection of your district budget? And what kinds of things are you and other superintendents facing with the funding crunch? And how would vouchers exacerbate that?
Well, again, the cost, our costs have gone up about 19% just because of inflation since the last funding increase to schools. So you do the math, they are almost 20% increase in our costs. And those costs are, you know, all throughout the system. Again, the system is not just paying that teacher. There's all those other things that are involved in running that school system. But again, we do spend the majority of our money, and I know Austin ISD does also. I don't think there's any schools that are less than, about 80% of their money goes towards salaries. A school district is a very, you know, personnel-intensive business, and I'm glad it is that way. That's what it needs to be. Having relationships with kids is the key, I believe, to increasing academic achievement for those kids, especially in areas like mine where, and I know Austin faces the same things. You know, when you have over 90% of your students are low-income, and I still believe that's the number-one factor that affects the performance of kids. It has nothing to do with the fact that 85% of my kids are minority students. That's not the factor. The factor is the poverty that they're facing and the limited opportunities they get from that. And so we're doing our best to overcome those things. So I don't know if I can completely answer all of what those factors would be. Again, I think that goes to Norma's point about how much of this is unknown. And again, I took the challenge and looked up some of that, did the Google search that I was told to do and look up some of that data. You scroll down the page and get to like the third or fourth entry, and you can get data that contradicts that first thing that comes up in the Google search. So it depends on who does this study and who wants to put that data together. And, but the majority of them, past that first one that came up, showed much different statistics on a lot of those things, so.
I mean, the data's the data, and if the money's going to the teachers, then why isn't it? I mean, since 1970, Texas has, according to National Center for Education statistics, increased per-student funding after adjusting for inflation by 166%. Teacher salaries have only gone up by 10%. I think we could agree that that's probably a problem. It's not making its way into the classroom towards the teachers. And maybe we don't answer that question today, but I think competition could be part of the solution. There have been five studies on the topic, not a lot. All five of them have found statistically significant positive effects of private and